All right, good morning, everyone. It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, January fourteenth. Our first item is the approval of the agenda, and it's my understanding that item number three on the agenda will be pulled to a later date.
I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of item three.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? I see none in the office, none online?
None, Mr. Chair.
All right, we will move on to approval of bills and vouchers.
Move for approval of the bills and vouchers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Room to approve the minutes for the date.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Item number two, request approval of letter of support for Cassau Thirty-Six Bridge Replacement. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning. Yes, so what I'm here today is approval of the letter of support for the Cassau Thirty-Six Bridge Replacement. So this is, we are applying for a raise grant along with Polk County and Norman County in Minnesota, and Cass County and Trail County in North Dakota. So we have applied for this one multiple times. So if we were to get funding, it would be eighty percent federal funds. There would be a bridge bonding match and also a local match. This bridge is, right now, engineers estimate it's about ten million dollars. So it'd be eight million in federal, about a million in bridge bonding, and a million in Cassau if we were to get it. This is a deficient bridge just north of Georgetown. It's the old Trust Bridge that, I think this is the seventh or eighth time that we've applied for this raise grant.
Any questions? Yeah, okay. No, you do.
I don't know.
Okay.
Move for approval.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the...
The letter for the Cassau Thirty-Six Bridge Replacement.
Yes. All right, any further discussion?
I guess I have one question.
Okay.
Is, when's the last time that was inspected, that bridge?
That one's yearly, so every other year, Mendat does a fracture critical inspection, and then every other year, we do our own inspection on it.
And they're continually passing?
Yeah. It's deficient, but it's still, I mean, it's still, it's load-posted, but it's still for, can drive across it.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Our next item is the discussion of the Clay County Tobacco Ordinance. And this was... We're a little bit early on this. I don't know if I should just wait if there's... Because this one had interest in others, I think we'll, I'm gonna kind of try to keep this on the timeline that the agenda said here, so...
Do me a report.
Okay, yeah, all right. We'll move into committee reports. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I attended a meeting facilitated by the Chamber of Commerce with the City of Morehead Legislative Delegates and Clay County's interests as well regarding legislative priorities and asks. As you know, flood mitigation dollars is a huge priority for both the City of Morehead and Clay County for this upcoming legislative session, which starts today. And so we talked a little bit about what our strategy would be, how we could incorporate the chamber as helping facilitate those asks in St. Paul, who's the contact and what makes the most sense there going forward. I think we have agreed to loop Commissioner Campbell into those meetings, having a standing weekly meeting, as we've done with our PRTF Committee, to make sure that whoever's having contacts or conversations in St. Paul, we're adding to the dynamic of that conversation as we continue to go down weekly. So I really appreciate the chamber and the City of Morehead for being part of those dialogues. And then I did have several just conversations with different representatives regarding our PRTF ask, leading up to, I know what Commissioner Kramnoff and Administrator Larson will talk about, the presentation to MIAC. So I won't spill the beans on that, but I'm really excited about the work going forward with that. And I believe that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Bear.
Last week, I had met with Wild Rice Watershed Board. They passed two permits, one of which for the Clay County Highway Department to replace a box culvert in Goose Prairie Township, and they also discussed cleaning out another portion of ditch eighteen in Goose Prairie Township. And then we met with West Regional Water District, with the West Central Initiative Board at the Government Center, with Mr. Campbell and myself, and Steve Larson was there as well, to talk about funding sources for the West Regional Water District to help fund the phases of, last phases of the engineering and the planning of that water district. And then after that meeting, we went down to, myself and Mr. Campbell went down to Holly, also with the West Central Water District, to discuss, to Holly staff about planning and development of the water district there as well. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ebberg.
On the eighteenth, I virtually attended the joint Northwest Mercy Communication Board Rack and Board Combination Meeting. We elected officers for the year. The Rack selected Chris Miller of Beltrami County as their chair, Nancy Schaefer from Polk County as vice chair. On board, we selected Bruce Lawrence from Pennington County as chair and vice chair, Jim Ducksstead from Marshall. We discussed PSAP NC nine-one-one committee, some of the formatting and some of the regional work that needs to get done for the GIS. Norman County has got their GIS figures in. We've had ours in for some time. It looks like our entire region, once Norman County, once their stuff's verified, we're gonna be total, our region's gonna be up to speed on the GIS submissions for the state. And we discussed some training opportunities. I believe March twelfth, I'm gonna follow up on this, to be a training for board members. And I made Ezra aware of that, and we will both try and get to that, which will be right after the next meeting in March. The nineteenth, I attended the Diversion Authority's annual meeting, which is basically a business meeting. We confirmed a resolution on the meeting dates for the year, and for the most part, had a resolution of appointment for two thousand twenty-five meeting, or members for the Diversion Authority. Some project updates with the drone video, and that was pretty much our entire business for that meeting.
Can I ask a brief question? I know in the past, Commissioner Gross was the alternate for the Diversion Authority, and seeing how having three of us on an email chain would be a breach in open meeting violations, how did we communicate with Commissioner Gross's agendas coming so that he could stay aware of issues if needed to step in? So now that I'm the alternate on that, how would that work?
Yeah, I think in the past, what's happened was notification of meetings and all that stuff went out, but there was no correspondence relating to, if it was, it would be replied just to one and not to all. I think, you know, that needs to be very careful. And I don't know that, I'm not even sure if Commissioner Gross even received a whole lot of...
You're correct, Mr. Chair. I don't believe Mr. Gross was on most of the emails.
I think what ended up happening there is if Commissioner Ebberg or I could not be there, we would notify Commissioner Gross that one of us couldn't be there, and then he would show up in our place, so...
I don't even recall him ever. It was generally, if one of us wasn't there, we were remote.
Yeah, yeah.
In my experience.
Which is fine. I just will say that if there's a way to get agenda packets to me, either through our administrator, I would like to have those in case I needed to act. Without that, I would not.
And there's no violation of open meeting law, simply sending packets to board members and alternates, because there's no activity, no discussion, nothing being done in that process. So Steve, maybe you can work through your committee there with the Diversion Authority and make sure that Commissioner Mojo gets the packets as necessary.
I get the joint powers packets, and I've notified them that I can't attend, because there'd be three of us. But I just, every time I get it, I respond with, I will not be there, I decline, and the agenda is attached to that, so...
So we can make sure that you get those. I would want to know, too, if I had to fill in to have access to that information. And by the way, those packets are, can be very lengthy.
Yeah, enormous.
So usually, when we get them, we get them, you know, we don't get hard copies of it. It's just all online. All right.
It was last year, Morehead expanded theirs to allow more chickens, and especially on bigger acreages. That had caught the attention of Commissioner Strand and wanted to be advised or find out what the different entities were doing now to bring forward deferral, potentially having similar rules of Morehead. But wanted the, excuse me, the food partners to bring forward a recommendation. Also, then, second, I found this very interesting, and I've been in these units. We had a presentation from Great Plains Greens. They're a local producer of vegetable supplies, fresh produce, grown hydroponically, year round, and they do it on a scale to their individual customers. It's organic food, and it uses ninety-nine percent less water than traditional produce. And to my surprise, and I'm very grateful for this, they actually have been supplying fresh produce to Holly and Dorrith School Districts for a while, so it was new to me. And I'd been in these units before, elsewhere at a college in Central Lakes. So I've seen the work that they do and pretty impressed by it. Then also on a local level, and this goes back to DGF, there was a recognition done by our own Erica Frank, excuse me, with our Clay County zoning and planning and zoning. Anyway, Erica presented a word to the Dorrith Felton School. This is from the twenty-five, twenty, or twenty twenty-five Steering Committee, and it's just a recognition of Dorrith London Felton Schools as they provide a program called Share Cart Program, which helps reduce food waste by allowing students to share the unwanted or unfinished food with others. Students can place unopened, prepackaged, shelf-stable items like granola bars, crackers, on the cart, as well as fruits with intact skins and temperature-controlled items like milk and string cheese. This is initiative in part of a broader effort to combat food waste in Minnesota, where public schools generate nearly five hundred thousand pounds of waste daily. The program is not, or the program not only helps reduce waste, but also provides students for the students that need it. And I just was really moved by this, so thank you. That was presented by Shannon O'Acne, their kitchen supervisor, and certainly Shannon Hunstead, the superintendent, has also spoke about this program, so kudos to them. So that was the main parts. Food Partners, excuse me, one last part on that. Food Partners did work through a strategic plan throughout the summer, and they came up with a work plan that includes three parts. It'll have a connections, which will be a continued growth of getting major key stakeholders involved with Food Partners. Then there's communication and education, which will be the Action Network, which is similar or have bits and pieces of what First Fridays used to look like, along with other things. And then certainly, the third part is to bring recommendations to the Food Commission for policies and practices. So that's into that meeting. Then I want to go to the PRTF on Thursday and Friday. Steve Larson, our administration, along with Steve Summers, who was with Behavioral, oh, I'm blanking here. Sorry, folks. Solutions, Behavioral, Plenty. And anyway, it was a wonderful, well worth our time going down to make a presentation on our PRTF ask with the presentation to the MIAC, the Minnesota Indians Association Council. And with that, we were able to provide information, give a presentation similar to what we did at AMC. It was met with great reception, and let me get my notes here. That's why I'm stumbling a little bit. Anyway, they really, right up front, especially White Earth, who we talked to privately a couple of times, their chair, Michael Fairbanks, and we had met him on a couple manners, manners, hoping to go to their council meeting and maybe give it direct up in Monoman area. We also met leaders out of the Red Lake and Leech Lake. So we kind of met our quadrant of people up to the north. Also had a nice talk with the chair down at Prairie Island, and he was aware of some of the work that we did. And certainly, that whole council saw the need for what we were doing, how we were doing it, and again, they gave us very good recognition for the work that they were aware that Clay County does in preventative mental health measures and all the work that we do in bringing help to those with mental needs as they are in our juvenile system. I was very pleased we had a resolution signed, and we will have that in our packet and work with that resolution as we advance forward with state legislature. So, thank you.
Can I just really briefly, I just want to say thank you to staff for working with Representative Keeler on that. To have the full support of eleven sovereign nations in Minnesota is a fantastic testament to the need that all of us are seeing in our communities, and I really appreciate you going to them on the front end to encourage them to help provide insight as we look at what culturally infused care looks like within the facility that we're proposing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we will go back to our scheduled agenda, and the next item on the agenda is the discussion on the Clay County Tobacco Ordinance. Last week, Commissioner Bear had requested that this be placed on the agenda for discussion. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, Commissioner Bear, with you on this, and we'll see where it goes.
I guess I have questions pertaining to this, on how it all became to the board. Did it go through a committee before it came? Was there, who assigned staff to look into this to decide we should go down this route?
I can answer that, or go ahead, Steve. Oh, so as part of our public health and social services, Commissioner Ebberg and I served on that committee. It was brought forward through us.
Through you, through that committee?
Yeah.
Did you ever see a red line version of this ordinance?
No, but we had the old one and we had the new one.
Did the rest of the board see the old one and the new one written?
Never seen it in our packet.
I guess I, I'm not in favor of the ordinance. I would like us to have another public hearing so I can look at it, I mean, and make it known for a red line version for everybody else that has not received one?
I get, if I can, just to discuss a couple of things here, and going back to this, and of course, when it was presented on the seventeenth, you know, we've go through an awful lot of ordinance changes. There's, you know, in different varieties of things, whether there's zoning ordinance and those types of things. And typically, when there's an ordinance presented, and I've always asked for red line versions of things, so you know what's going, and especially when it's, when they say one ordinance is gonna be completely thrown out and replaced completely by a new one, and they, you know, then it's, it's nice to know what changed. I know in this particular instance, there was, there was language as a result to vape, but nowhere did I know was there any other changes within the document. Because one, I think the way it was presented, if I remember the way it was presented, the old ordinance was completely eliminated with the new one. And so when you have an old ordinance, we completely replace a new one, what are the changes between those that you're actually voting on that brings it? And I didn't see that. The other thing typically when we have some of these ordinances, there isn't an awful lot of public input or comment at those hearings. Oftentimes, there's none. In a particular case like this one, where we had multiple people speaking both in favor and opposed the ordinance, I would have liked time to digest that. And what happened was, is that hearing was closed, and it was immediately voted on. And I had, I had asked our administrator before the meeting, I said, how long do we have before we have to make a decision on these types of things? And I think, I think what he told me was sixty days. Is that correct?
Yeah, you had the ability to have multiple public hearings if that was your decision, but you would have had, you have time to make that decision after the public...
Yeah. And what I found kind of, and I had, I had issues with it, there was another dissenting vote on it as well, and even during that, even during that open testimony, our commissioner elect stood up and made some comments that, to me, suggested some concern. And so to submit an ordinance for approval, you know, at the, on December seventeenth, the end of the year, with a new commissioner coming on, I just questioned if we should be doing that, and I still question it today. And I still have an awful lot of questions that I would have liked to have asked in that process, and, and comments that I've heard from public since then as well. And then I've been trying to do some research myself, and I know there was an awful lot of discussion regarding doing this to protect kids, and I get that. I get that, and I did a simple thing, and I just, I went on to, and I asked my Safari web browser, is flavored vapes available online? And the answer is yes. You know, so, so I don't know how we can control that, you know, and that becomes a much, that's why I even mentioned some of these things that we need to do, needs to be done at the state and federal level and not at the local level. Again, I'm kind of venting a little bit, and I'm a little disappointed, and I'm also disappointed in the fact that I wasn't even sure, based on what we voted on, when this thing took effect. And, you know, so we, you know, we have businesses out there who may have invested in months of product. And if, you know, and then we, I later learned that if you, if you don't incorporate an effective date within what you're doing, that the effective date comes immediately. And I don't know that I've ever had a proposed ordinance come before us before that did not include an effective date. So that was another disappointing situation with me. In the meantime, I've since learned that our staff has, has, you know, set a, kind of an arbitrary date, giving these people till April first to bring down their product. I'm, no, I'm hearing that. I didn't hear that directly from staff, but I've heard that that's what's been said, and I think it was in a, in a article. But if somebody, if there's somebody who's gonna be giving a timeframe, that should be incorporated into what we do and what the board approves. So I'm a little bit frustrated on this one, and in the handling of it, the implementation of it, and the speediness of it. You know, when Morehead or Dillworth, when they go through their ordinance like that, they typically have a first and a second reading on ordinances. That allows time to, we don't, we don't have that in county government. We don't have a first reading and a second reading. But on ordinance of this that can be controversial, it can, we as a board should be allowed the time to digest what's been said in public hearings, to, you know, to help incorporate. I, you know, there's portions of me that said that, yes, we should be doing this, and there's portions of me that's, no, we shouldn't be doing this. And I just don't think, in my mind, we didn't have the proper dialogue, and I didn't, I don't, I think for a policy and ordinance that was gonna be moving forward into the year, to not have the incoming commissioner be part of that dialogue in that vote, I think is, it just seemed rushed to me, so... In terms of the, in terms of the discussion about another public hearing, and we'll see where that dialogue goes and that, you know, somebody would have to move to do that, but any other comments regarding?
Just a couple of observations. The process that this went through was months of discussion on our portfolio, Commissioner Kramnoff and I, with staff. To say it could have been better in the process is certainly has merit, but... To say it could've been better in the process certainly has merit, but the process complied with the, all the expectations that we normally see. We had a public hearing. I'm not familiar with the county ever having more than one. I don't think it'd be prohibited. I know the city required two. The county doesn't. So, we complied with the statute on that. In my experience, being staff, and implementing a number of laws, including state statutes that are passed, the expectation was that I implemented it as chief of police, and my agency followed the direction that I came up with, with command staff. And we had several statutes, one of which we, was a six-month process, process to get an ordinance on drug paraphernalia. And we went through six months of meetings. And when we got the, the, the ordinance, it passed, and I gave 60 days to sell their inventory. And that was a decision that my staff and I came up with.
Can I ask a question, though? I mean, I, here's my question in regards to date, though. I, I really do appreciate how it was implemented before, but I don't necessarily know if one commissioner or two commissioners can direct staff to implement an arbitrary date. And that was my email and question last week, is who gave the decision that we're going to set an April 1st timeline, to which it goes out in the media, to business owners, and whatever, when this entire board was not even part of that dialogue?
I'll answer that for you, if you'd like. None of the commissioners. That was a decision of staff implementation of an ordinance that we approved.
And I...
And that is, in, in my experience, excuse me, in my experience, that's how it works, is the electeds come up with the legislation, a statute if you're state, an ordinance if you're local, and that is given to the enforcement entity, in this case, Public Health, and they come up with procedures to implement it. I would understand our concern if they went out and said, "It's January 1st, Happy New Year, here's your citation." But I think it was done with, with, the businesses' needs were, were acknowledged, the implementation brought forward measures to where they could eliminate themselves from the, with the inventory that will no longer be permitted. Or they can go to their local city government and have that government take over the licensure, and they can come up with whatever city ordinance they want that will allow them to sell whatever they want, as long as it doesn't violate state law or federal law. But without being preachy about this, I just spent too many years in a position to where I had to implement the enforcement of statutes and ordinances, new ones, synthetic marijuana, a number of different, different issues, facsimile weapons. And it, the electeds did not tell me how to enforce that. If they're, if you're gonna hire staff, they need to be competent enough to come up with an acceptable, measured, operational address of how a statute should be enforced. And in this instance, I'm comfortable that they did. If they had gone out and started handing out citations on January 1st, or the day after we, we passed this ordinance, I'd have real concerns. But they came up with a professional, respectful way, and, and the first enforcement actions are gonna be educational. They're gonna make people aware of what the problem is, and give them a chance to rectify their, their procedures. You know, we didn't come up with that, and we should've. If we, if we wanna have those kind of controls, we need to come up with the operational order, but that's stepping out of our lane. We hire professionals to implement these things. We just need to give them good laws to, to, and ordinances to, to operate under. And I don't think they exceeded that. I don't know about Commissioner Krabnikoff, but I never gave them a directive on what was gonna be contained in there. In fact, they gave us two versions, and we selected the one that said that we were not, we were gonna grandfather in some of the menthol products. So, you know, I'm, this is not a hill I'm willing to die on, and if the commission feels like we need to start the process over again, I'd be happy to listen to the citizens who came in here and gave us their input, because we got a lot of it. And I honestly think, as far as what you can get on the internet, I'll quote Commissioner Gross, "We can only do what we can do to address these problems, and the problems are affecting our youth." And to say they can go to Fargo and get this, or to say they can get on the internet and get it, okay. We only can control what we control. We don't control the internet. Nobody does. We don't control what state of North Dakota legislates. And the ordinances that I, I helped get passed here in Morehead, back in, I think, 2010, were a response to the fact that we were way out of line compared to the laws of North Dakota. And we responded to that. If North Dakota wants to respond to legislation that we passed, that's great. But, you know, we can only control what we have the right to control. And if there's a problem, we can need to do what portion we can do to, to address it. And I think we did that. If there's a different feeling in the commission now, you know, my opinion has not changed, but I will not stifle discussion. That's how we operate. We've always come to a consensus, or we've accepted the fact when we lost a vote. We accept that it's time to move on and work towards the objectives of the people of Clay County. And that's what we've done. We wanna go back and start the process again? That's something that we need to decide today. Thank you.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I see that our planning and zoning department is here as well, and Commissioner Campbell and I have worked in a capacity there, and I know Commissioner Baer now has served in that committee because he was the chair of the Planning Commission. And we've been working for months, as you talk about it, at committee level, but every month, we've had the opportunity for the public to speak on the proposed changes. Every month, for over six to seven months, correct? It's almost been, and I know you're, this isn't a public hearing, but just a head nod, but we've had the opportunity for folks to provide insight and input on that. And with that, we talked a little bit about the enforcement capacity, which I think is part of my concern, is that when I read, there's a date of April 1st for potential enforcement going on in the county, when, when really, you know, you can say that the county doesn't need to have a, a say in that, but really, I, I'm a little concerned that the elected body needs to answer to the public when they call me and say, "Well, April 1st was never part of that dialogue at your public hearing, and now I'm reading it in the paper." We still need to answer to that, whether we're on a committee or not, because we are the enforcing agency. And so, I, I certainly wanna hear from Public Health if the enforcement has to do with a staffing capacity or a buy-down capacity. I think that's part of the overall dialogue that we need to have, because it does create this hardship, if you will, in the community, that the governing board doesn't have a, a logical explanation about why we came up with this date. And so, back to the Planning Committee, where we've talked about ordinances and the ordinance updates, we've reported frequently, in-depth about the changes, and even requested line item, red line versions, to this board. So, you have the time and the opportunity to look at it and see what's changed, and see wasn't changed, what may have changed, to have the opportunity to provide insight and feedback. And if you're saying that that's a commissioner micromanaging the process, then I'm okay micromanaging that process. I did not request that this come to the board, but I did provide pointed concern last week on how the date came out. You know, we, we work a lot, whether we're on the committee or not, in terms of how we communicate, we have a communications person now, to our community on dates coming out. And frankly, I felt a little blindsided, that I did sit through that committee on the se, or commission meeting on the 17th, was part of the dialogue, did have raised concerns, but if I misheard an April 1st date, I apologize. But I do not believe there was an April 1st date. And so, I, I just felt it was, you know, I think, one, I think that we could've done better, and we will do better in the future. But I do appreciate the opportunity for additional time to make sure that whatever comes out is the most valid piece going forward. And furthermore, to say, "North Dakota can do it," or "Internet can do, can do it," and, and we should be okay with it, 'cause we can control what we can control, you know, I wanna have a pointed discussion about how we help the, the schools to enforce or to prevent, I mean, I know those are the dialogues you're having, Jason, but what further can go forward? Because if you talk to the schools, 90 to 95% of what they're confiscating is vape. So, let's, let's talk about that. But I think it's, there's a lot of confusion about what was passed. There's a lot of concern that was raised forward to me, that from users, non-users, business owners alike, boy, that was pushed fast. And it, for government that seems to work fairly slow in certain capacities, it seemed like that was really rushed.
Commissioner Krabnikoff.
Yeah. So, just a couple of comments. I'm not gonna go line and do a lot of repeating here, but I had always, to the question about it being in the ordinance, it was in the ordinance initially, when the first presentation was given, and when we set the public, the potential of a public hearing. And I don't have that date, but that would've been sometime in...
October 22nd.
Thank you. And then we, we agreed to have a public hearing, then that went to the 17th of December. In that period of time, going back to the early, the first meeting, we talked about prevented sales of flavored vape, blank, and, or flavored tobacco, excuse me, flavored tobacco. Then we, we started having, I, at least I did, with a few people, the positive, the negative. I talked to a Harley business owner, he made very clear, he didn't sell vape, but he wasn't, why would we be doing this? And, and it just seemed too much, too quick. With that, when it came to the hearing, that's why two things came on. Did we wanna leave it as all the flavored products, no person shall sell or offer any sale of any products, or the one we passed, that we would have flavored, not prohibit sale of flavored products, excluding menthol cigarettes and chewing, flavored chewing tobacco? And the point of that was mitigate the ones that had higher implications and addictive factors through nicotine. And, and it also seemed to help those few business owners that were selling flavored tobacco, you know, not such a hard hit. So, I think consideration was made. I think in Commissioner Gross's motion, I think that gave consideration to the businesses. For me, the response, and, and again, maybe this is my world. I don't know about other people's world. All I got was thanks. All I got was thanks for everything we did, from people around the community that I'm interact with. And I hope I had some thanks, and it wasn't said to me, of the fact that we had listened to the business owners, and the one in particular that I talked to, to help have an understanding that these weren't as harsh as the other ones, the zens and the vapes, and yet, an understanding of keeping a little bit of that in the mix. My heart goes to wipe it all out, but, you know, that's, you know, I think we were conciliatory. As far as the, as far as the rollout, I remember there being the discussion early on about what a potential rollout could be. However, that wasn't in any of the discussion of the ordinance. It was gonna always be a secondary part, in my mind. So, is that a miss maybe on my part that day? You know, I'll take the heat on that one, maybe. But yet, at the same time, and I'm sorry, the way it worked out that the forum got ahead of us, you know, I don't think that's right either. But that being said, I don't know who, in having this ordinance, wouldn't have some consideration for the business owners to have that period of time to get rid of inventory and, and some leniency on, on maybe first offenses or something like that. But, I mean, I, I think, and the last thing, we talked about, well, they can get it here, they can get it here, and, you know, I view, I, I view, when it comes to mental health, when it comes to public safety, these things, we need help with prevention. Nicotine creates a brain disorder, and there is scientific fact about that. So, if there is anything we can do to mitigate it, I think this is, is it the, the answer? No. But is it a step forward? Yes. And right now, 80% of Clay County already lives on a similar ordinance, whether it's Morehead, which is totally out, or like Dilworth and Barnesville, that give the option for flavored chew and, and menthol cigarettes. So, I don't think this is new to Clay County. 52,000 people live under an ordinance, and I guess we're looking for the rest of the county. And I, if we keep going on the Clay County side, I hope someday Cass County will look at it. The region, I think, it's part of being the leaders in the world of good health and, and society, so. And in, and just really, overall, doing the best we can for the kids.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have one more comment, I guess. I guess I would like to see a second public hearing or a reading of this. I believe it was very rushed, for having one public hearing to decide an ordinance for the other chunk of the county, which you say 80% lives under this, but the other 20%, would like to see some more input on it. I've, I've had a couple people reach out to me, other business owners reach out to me. Staff still has not contacted on this ordinance at all. We are a month into it, and those businesses still have not been reached out by staff, saying an implementation date, or what's happening. They've asked me, "So, can I sell it? Do I have to take it off the shelves?" So, I'd like to see just another public hearing on this matter. And if, if, I'll make a motion to that. I'd like to make a motion to have a second public hearing on the tobacco ordinance that was passed December 17th.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baer, I, just to, just to clarify, and Mr. Melton apologizes for not being able to be here, he's in trial this morning. But in talking with, with Mr. Melton, we, we, this board has, has acted on the ordinance. And so, the, the action before you this morning would be the one to, to leave it as it is. Based on your motion, that motion would then say, we would request a, our public hearing to look at repealing the, revealing the ordinance. It would be then subject to the, to the 10-day notice, and, and looking at the calendar and the notifications, if the board were to approve, we would, the earliest that we could have, that would be February 4th.
Then I will make a motion to rescind this ordinance, and have a public hearing on that matter.
Could I have a clarification?
Yes.
Was this advertised that there would be a potential action?
We're, we're not taking any action, per se, from the standpoint of, of revoking the ordinance. And so, it's my understanding that we would be within our, it would be as if, at different times, when you've provided me guidance to do something, this board would be providing me guidance to, to work with Jackie to set up a, a hearing date.
Mr. Larson and Commissioner Mojo, I, I shouldn't even have allowed that comment to be made.
to be made. Once a motion is made, until there's a second, there should be no discussion. Uh, but I, I guess I would, I would just assume, uh, if Commissioner Baer would, um, maybe hold back on that motion till we, till we can at least understand the proper protocol to, to move forward, so that we can allow for that discussion.
Yep.
I believe when there's a motion made, there's no discussion until there's a second.
And I, I didn't want to make any motion unless I knew what legally it had been.
Right. Yeah. So, so, um, so just a point of clarification here, um... On our, in our agenda packet today, it was, according to the document here, it said discussion only.
Correct.
And that goes to what Commissioner Mojo was asking, what we off, what we had, had advertised here in, in terms of discussion. So is, uh, so we have an ordinance, we have an ordinance that's in place and, and valid.
Correct.
And so the, the process to change that, either change it or...
Or amend it.
Amend it?
Yep. Would require a public, another public...
Would require a public hearing. And the, and, uh, so with the public, do, do, within the advertising of the public hearing, do we have to state, I mean, we don't know if it would be rescind, you know, you, you don't know if something's going to be rescinded until you have your public hearing.
Well, I think you are correct, Mr. Chair Commissioners, in that the, the request has to be specific as far as, and, and in the motion from Commissioner Baer, his, his request was that rescinded, a open, or excuse me, a public hearing be held on potentially rescinding, uh, the ordinance. And so, um, under that, under that motion, amending it per se wouldn't be something that would be considered, um, because there would then have to be, I mean, part of the challenge would be is, I'm assuming we would ask the county attorney's office then to submit what, uh, what they wish the ordinance to look like, um, for that public hearing to be considered.
And that, and that goes to my point. So, uh, you know, I, um, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna hold a public hearing, like when this last public hearing was held, there was, there was a document that was proposed. And so if we're gonna have another public hearing, is the public hearing gonna be to determine whether it's that or something else, or?
Well, I mean, that ultimately, from a policy standpoint, that's up to this board. If this board wants to, to rescind, I mean, mu- much of the changes that were implemented were state statute. Uh, and so really, really the crux of what we're talking about is, is that one, one sentence or a couple sentences now.
The local.
Yeah, the local piece. So I don't think there would be any option for this board to, um, change most of that other than that one, that one.
So could you, could you, if I might, Mr.?
Yeah, go ahead.
So could there be a, a motion to amend or rescind? Because you said...
That would, that would cover, that would cover, um, all the possible actions.
Because then if what we're saying, we wanted the opportunity for full insight and input, that would cover.
Yes. Uh, because at the end, you could, you could amend it, you could rescind it, or at the end, you may not have the support to change it at all, and then it would remain the ordinance that, that, the way it reads now.
If I, if I may, to, uh, try to get somewhere on this and to, you know, and it's unfortunate our county attorney couldn't be here today, but he is in a significant trial, that's why he's not here today. So, uh, but I, you know, maybe, I have an immediate concern. And the immediate concern is this implementation as, as it's written today and that timeline. And I don't know, you know, I mean, the date of, of April 1 was put out there. I would like to propose, at least in the time being, that, that, that be moved back to, say, June 1. And then in the meantime, let's, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna hold another public hearing, let's understand and, and, and be able to give the proper direction from a legal standpoint as to how you have to change an ordinance or modify an ordinance. I, I, I don't think there's anything earth-shattering that says we need to do this by February 3rd, as long as we have an implementation timeline that, that allows these businesses to know they have, you know, they can continue basically with what they're doing until June 1 instead of April 1. You know, so maybe, you know, maybe that can be the first step that we can take, uh, and that, and that way, it's, it's not coming from a staff member, this is coming from the board that says, look, the board has said, as of the way the ordinance reads right now, you have till June 1. That's what I'm proposing. You have till June 1, and at that point in time, uh, unless there's some changes, your product has to be off the shelves. Uh, and then, and then in the meantime, then we can, I think we need to have more dialogue with Brian here to make sure that we set this next public hearing, Commissioner Baer, as you would like to have, uh, make sure that we do it right. And I, I, I don't, we're kind of shooting from the hip here this morning, and I don't know that I want to do that.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, if there's concern about, uh, the protocol, I would, I would then, uh, suggest that you don't take any action today, that I would then put two separate items on the agenda for next week. One, um, if it's the board's wishes to also then address when, when the implementation would start from, from the, um, public health standpoint, and then also to have an additional dialogue on the motion that, uh, the motion that Commissioner Baer has made.
Well, I, you know, I, I don't know, probably, I, you know, I, we didn't, we didn't advertise any, uh, dis, or, today was discussion only, but in terms of, um, the implementation, we had no, we had no, uh, discussion on the implementation to begin with, and, and, you know, whether we do that today or we do that next week too, that's fine, or, or whenever, but I'll, I won't, I'll be, I'll be gone next week, but, um...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I want us to contemplate the position we're putting staff in. I still hold that this is, it's certainly appropriate for the commission to have input and direct staff on how we want this implemented. But when we don't, de facto, they are the ones that have to implement the, the legislation that we pass. And not today, but at least by next week, we need to give them some directive. Commissioner Baer has indicated he's talked to business people, they haven't heard from staff yet. Well, they're not going to hear from staff after today until we give them the parameters that, there's this expectation of what we expect. I think it's legitimate to say, if a motion passes, to, to amend or, uh, and, uh, remove this, the, the new statute, we need to come up with something that brings state law into our statute, which this did. That's a whole can of worms that they need to go out and educate the, the public on. So I would ask that we expedite this to next week, and that we bring this forward. Uh, if we're gonna have a public meeting, we said it, but we, we do what we need to do to make sure the staff is complying with our expectations, and that means it has to be conveyed to them.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I know in the past, when we've had issues that are, um, needing, um, the entire commission's insight, I know that our chair will be gone next week as well. And so I just would, would put that forward for the board's dialogue as well.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, I think, uh, even just looking back at our meeting minutes, we did alter, alter the hearing, public hearing date for that reason before, so I think that would be consistent with our, with our past, past actions. And so, um, what, uh, like you said, Commissioner, or excuse me, um, County Attorney Melton has been, uh, busy, extremely busy, uh, and, and so we've not even had the opportunity to talk much more than a couple of phone calls. And so, uh, that would allow time, uh, that would allow time to, uh, to, uh, I guess, a couple of different weeks. I think that based on, based on the discussion, uh, that, that this board has had and the expressed concern from a business standpoint, I think that, um, you know, your board, your action would take place whether it's next week or two weeks from now. Uh, I think that you've given them an idea of, uh, of your concerns, and so I think from, from a standpoint of making a decision, uh, we would, we could do that in, in two weeks or three weeks, depending on, again, the rest of my know that we have a busy, we have a busy, uh, time off schedule here for, for some of our commissioners, so.
I guess my, my point is, earlier in your dialogue, you said that you could present something next Tuesday for the board to vote on what they, what they liked, and I, I don't know where we stand here, but that would mean that there would be four with the potential of a tie.
Correct. Yeah. Commissioner Graboff.
So just, uh, two matters. Number one, back... Two matters, uh, going back to the ordinance itself, so going back to the packet that we all received that day on December 17. The ordinance was all laid out there, and the only, uh, if you cared to take note, uh, it would involve the one line as far as the flavored tobaccos, is all in section seven, prohibited sales, and in regard of number C, flavored products. And it states what we were handed, no person shall sell or offer any sale of any flavored products. Again, because we talked to people, that's what's written, that's what we were given. Public Health, when they came over, uh, came and talked to us, or, excuse me, test, or testified, they had rolled out two options. In other words, excluding menthol cigarettes and chewing tobacco. Once again, so that language is the only change that has been, um, you know, if we're gonna amend, I guess, there's something that's, to me, the one that we should be, um, dealing with. The rest of it has already been, uh, up toward updates. The, the other matter I want to talk about is the rollout. You know, I've read it in the forum. I haven't heard it from our people. Why are we trying to regulate something we even, we haven't even heard yet? So they're here today, maybe they want to tell us.
Are you asking them?
Uh, if that would help this group today, yes. I, you know, I read the forum article once, figured we'd be talking about it, and I trust what they do. But I'd rather hear it from our staff than media. So yes, if you ever consider it.
Jason?
Excuse me. Chair Campbell and Commissioner, Commissioners, which question, there's been a lot of questions that have been asked, um, I've been trying to keep track as we go, which question are you asking me specifically to answer?
I would just, tell us about the rollout, what you had intended in the rollout.
Absolutely. Um, so when we, uh, this, I brought the ordinance as well, when we gave out the packet, um, if you look at the very back page on effective date, section fourteen, um, it does state immediately that the ordinance becomes effective on the date of its publication or upon the publication of a summary of the ordinance. Um, so that was, has always been, I've, I've worked, I worked on the last ordinance that we did a long time ago, um, I've worked on many ordinances throughout the county, and each time, ordinances have always implemented immediately, but enforcement has always been something that we've been very mindful of. Um, one of the things I've learned, uh, after a decade of doing, um, tobacco control, is that we need to consider businesses in this. We need to consider the product that they have, um, in their store, right? Because they're, they're ordering ahead of time. So while youth and health are always going to be public health's focus, we, we want to protect them, we don't want to make an onerous burden also on those businesses. Um, so as far as, as what we wanted to do internally, we talked about enforcement giving at least three months. Um, we sent an email, we, we talked about it, we sent an email, we sent an email to, to Administrator Larson, to Commissioner Ebinger, and Commissioner Cabanoff, like, this is what we would like to do, what do you think? Um, what we, um, heard back, Commissioner Cabanoff talked with our, our county attorney, Brian Melton, um, who's told us it's an administrative decision, yes, that is, that, that you guys can enforce it that way. So that is the direction that we went with. And so, um, we had a, um, a request to give information, um, to the forum, that is why we proceeded as well, because something I'm very aware of is, as, I'm, I'm not a director, I'm, I'm down the totem pole, so I don't want to be speaking for the, for the county out on my own. Um, but please do understand that our, our goal is always to try to give the, um, the time for those businesses to be able to sell the product off, to give that, uh, uh, kind of a balance and fairness, while also promoting health for our, our community. Um, I believe, um, Commissioner Baer had, had mentioned that I haven't reached back out, I have had a couple of, uh, emails that have come from different businesses asking, like, when is implementation? We've been holding those until this email got out. So we're in the process of making those, those contacts back out. That's a very good, uh, point, because we don't want to leave anyone standing, um, wondering, can I sell this, can I not? We recognize that most of our, our businesses do want to follow the law, they're not out there trying to do something wrong. Um, and so, um, if it hasn't been, if the, if the callbacks haven't been fast enough, I do apologize, we've been, definitely been trying to do so.
One of the other things that I learned after the fact on this, and I, and I can't remember if it was through, um, through a media article or not, but this basically pertains to eleven establishments in Clay County, is that correct?
Correct.
Is that, was that, was that, did that come to public hearing, or was that, did I get that someplace else?
That might have been in the, the forum article. I, I don't believe the number of businesses were ever asked during the public hearing.
Okay. So, um, so in terms of the implementation timeline, uh, as, as you've noticed today, there's concern among some commissioners about, about the ordinance itself. In the meantime, the, the timeline that's been out there, and I believe the April 1 date was something that you provided to the forum, is that correct?
Correct. After speaking with my supervisor and my...
Yeah, yeah. So whatever, I mean, you probably consulted somebody to...
Yes, yes.
Uh, do you, do you, do you have an issue if that date was, was April 1 versus June 1?
Not at all, not at all. We, we want to make sure that this...
And again, I, again, I, I, and I propose that June 1 to give a little bit more time, not necess, not necessarily, you know, because as we're, as we start talking about early February here, holding, you know, that, just the timelines that are involved, uh, maybe, maybe we're not gonna be ready to even have a public hearing based on what direction we, we'd want to go within the, the, you know, the details for the public hearing. That's, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, because I'm trying to allow the, the appropriate time here, you know, if, if, if there's a, if there's gonna be a, a motion in the future to hold another public hearing, I want to know what the details of what the scope of that public hearing is going to be about, just a minute. And, and at the same point in time, I don't want to be under the gun.
Right.
Like I felt we were under the gun on December 17th to vote on that ordinance. And so that we can have the appropriate amount of time necessary to do it and to do it right and allow the, um, appropriate people to be involved. But I, I, I still think, but if we could just go out to these and, out to these eleven businesses and say this, you know, and, and reach out to them, say, this is what was passed, and, you know, and, you know, we'd like to see something by June 1 instead of April 1. And that allows us to, uh, the time to have the proper dialogue about what change, if any, this board wants to see. Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, we don't need a motion, we've done it past. That sounds great to me, and I think we need to see if there's a consensus here and give our staff some sort of direction. Rightly or wrongly, they've had to make these decisions on their own. And if we want to have them advise the merchants that are impacted by this, that June 1 will be the, the potential start, and even including your contact, that there is a discussion on, and to, to, to keep on top of it. And as we make... And as we make developments, let them know what those developments are, and if there's a public hearing, let them know when it is. But by consensus, I think we can do this.
And one of the discussions we've had here is about the businesses, you know, and how prior ordinances have been done. I, I don't know that there's been an ordinance in the history of Clay County that's banned a particular item that's legal. I don't know that that's ever been done within, within the county. You know, so to, to allow the appropriate amount of time and to allow these businesses that time, I, you know, whether it's a consensus or, or not, I, you know, I think we need to move on, and I, I guess I would just as soon see a motion be made directing staff to, to put the word out on, June 1 as the date for right now, with the idea in mind that, that future discussion is going to be had on the ordinance.
I don't know if we have, so we don't have a motion on the floor this.
Well, that's what I want to step in, we, right now, we do still have a motion, even though we've.
It was never seconded.
Or we rescinded?
I rescinded it.
He rescinded his motion.
Thank you. I'll make, I'll make the motion for June 1 if, if the floor is open for that.
All right, so your motion would be to have an implementation timeline for the ordinance, previously approved ordinance for June 1?
And our public health contact, the affected merchants, apprise them of that, and apprise them of any, any developments that we make public health aware of that needs to go out. Let the, let the communication start.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
I, while may provide a consensus for what's being had, will not be voting on this because we did not advertise that any action would be taken.
Any further discussion? And I, and I, I might note too that there's often times that we do have things that are brought up, sometimes even within committee reports, which ultimately end up with the motion to act on, that it isn't advertised. You know, I think the, I think the fact that this is just, you know, expanding on a timeline for the benefit of, of our commercial establishments that are impacted by this ordinance, I think it's something that needs to be sent to them.
I have a question for staff. If it's not, not on the agenda, can we make motions and act on things?
We, we have, generally, the policy has been that we don't, with, if there's funding money that's, that's connected to that, and so we, we have, we have taken, I, I mean, I feel in, of the two issues before this commission today, there was not a, because as part of the, the, the policy, you are the, you're the rule makers, right, and so from the standpoint of, from a rolling this out standpoint, you have the authority to, at any point, to determine what, what that would be, and so I, I don't believe that there would be any concern with, with addressing this during this meeting.
And, and I might point out, and our administrator is correct, and I know typically we, we don't like to, we don't like to act on things that aren't, but especially when there's financial, there's dollars involved. If, if, if we're acting, if there's motion made to spend money, for example, and that hasn't been advertised, we don't, it's been our course not to do that. I, like, again, I can state that I know there's times that through our committee reports, we report on something, and then a motion is made to act on it. I, I appreciate Commissioner Mojo's concern that it wasn't, you know, actually stated in here, but in all fairness to the commercial entities, I think, I think the direction is, is probably appropriate to move forward.
And I think, just, just to clarify, the, I mean, the ordinance is in, in effect. Well, essentially, the motion would have to be is that the enforcement would not take place until June 1.
And that's, and that's what the motion in the second states. All right, any further discussion? If we have a dissent, I think we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes.
Motion carried, all right. And so, and then I, as I mentioned, next week I'm going to be gone, but I think we're going to probably then need to have put in place an agenda at a future date when all five commissioners can be here to establish what, if any, type of a new ordinance, or what a new public hearing, what we'd be asking for in that public hearing process. I think that's, we need to have that dialogue, so we're going to basically be hashing over the same thing again, but.
Correct, so, so just for clarification, for staff perspective, at that public hearing, we would be providing the ordinance as it reads right now, in the, in the board agenda item, board agenda item for that first day, we would be coming back, asking for, for clarification of repeal, amend, and then looking at setting, setting the date, because the board would have to. The board, although, although we, we've talked about it, the board still has to take action to set the public hearing date, and it sounds like we're not comfortable doing it today. So we can present the ordinance as it reads several weeks from now, I guess, and, and then again, we'll, I'll reach out to you, because I know that you each have busy schedules, and then we'll set the date at that meeting.
One, one place to start, and it goes back to my comments on December 17th, after the public hearing was held, and before the vote was taken, one of the concerns I had is I never got to see a red line version of, of what had, what was and what is. So I didn't know what we're, you know, Commissioner Kravenoff said all it was is one line. I don't know that. I don't know that because I didn't see a complete comparison about what the changes were.
You have updates to be stamped on?
Okay, then, then we should know what those are, so, and it should be done in a red line version so that we know what all the changes are. Kathy McKay, so do we have a, do we have a motion still?
No, that's bad.
Okay, okay, all right, oh yeah, that is, all right, Kathy.
Okay, just, just a couple things I want to clarify, as far as the implementation timeframe, yes, we did hear Brian, or Brian Melton, our county attorney, stating it didn't require board action, that we could determine that, so, and Jason didn't do that solo, I just want to confirm that he did concur with myself, so, you know, I take the heat, and so that, that maybe shouldn't have happened before it went out into the media, we tried to communicate that, but clearly wasn't the case, so I, I'll take responsibility for, for that getting out before we had discussion with everyone. I also did want to say in preparation for the ordinance, I know that Jason and Rory tried to reach out to all of you individually to have some communication, I know it didn't work for, for a couple of you, but he, they really intended to communicate with all of you. Commissioner Baer wasn't part of that, obviously, but before that discussion about the ordinance, so they were making the attempts to make sure that everybody understood what we were going to talk about, so I know that sometimes the schedules didn't work out for a couple of you.
Just comment on that piece, we have to be really careful about circumventing the committee process in open meeting violations, and so it becomes a daisy chain accidentally if someone were to say, I did respond to Rory specifically on that, and he were to have shared something that one, not that he did, I'm just saying, something that one of the other commissioners did say, and so then it's an insight to me that violates the public component, and so the reason I didn't respond is I, I get really nervous about that, and so I rely really heavily on the conversations we have at this board. This committee does, or commission does do work sessions, and maybe this could have been a better opportunity for that, so in justifying why it had nothing to do with schedule, I just knew that this could be a controversial topic, and I did not want to do that.
You know, and I, and I do understand, you know, and I do, going back to some of the comments that Commissioner Ebinger made, and I, I do understand that, that we have a role in here, and we, you know, we establish what the rules or the laws are, so to speak, and then we have, we depend on our staff to implement those. You know, maybe there was a, an error on all sides in not understanding the implementation piece of that component, I don't, I don't know that any apologies need to be out there in terms of, of, of that, but I, but I, you know, instead of, instead of that, just, you know, now that, now that it's been brought to everybody's attention, we've had, we've had business people contacting certain commissioners, saying, what's the date, what's the deal with the state and states, and, and so now, now the nice thing about it is what motion was carried here, you can go to those people and you can say, you know, the board has given, the board has given you the opportunity to have till June 1, you know, unless some other action happens in the future. Yeah, and I, I guess we've kind of beat this to death this morning.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'm happy to talk about, and maybe for Commissioner Baer's, understanding about kind of public health's role and what our responsibilities are in our community, including policies and other things, so if there's, if you would like me to talk a bit more, doesn't have to be today, but another time about our responsibilities and, and kind of what we do in the community and why, and what, and what we do for all of our citizens, I'm happy to kind of talk about that.
Good. And then maybe, Jason, just moving forward, and I, and again, I, I, you know, in, in terms of getting ready for the next public hearing, if there's going to be one, and more information that comes out there, and, and one of the, one of the questions that I asked is, you know, you know, and there was an awful lot of the public comment that were there were directed at kids and children, right, and, and how these flavored things entice them to, I still, I still want to know how they're getting it now. You know, what, 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 what can, what can, how can that be addressed? I, I mean, we can, we can just say, well, we just, you know, the fact of the matter is, when I asked that question, I just, I asked it online here, yes, flavored bapes can be purchased online, however, federal and state laws restrict the sale of flavored bapes online, retailers often violate these, violate these laws. You know, I, you know, if we, so if we, you know, if you really want to solve the problem, Clay County's ordinance isn't going to do it, it's, there's got to be, there's got to be other areas that are going to come into play.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, it would be similar to how our underage kids getting alcohol. I mean, I think, you know, there's certainly people that are going to purchase for kids, whether it's.
But do we ban alcohol?
No, no, we don't. The, the fact of the matter is with tobacco, it's, it's just a, there's no health benefit whatsoever, it gravely affects people's health.
So does alcohol.
And when kids start, but when kids start, you know, you've got cardiovascular disease, they have asthma in kids, and I think Commissioner Kravenoff mentioned even the mental health piece, so there's nothing about tobacco and nicotine. So you're right, and we don't know how they're getting it, we assume that people are buying it legally and then getting it to their, to the underage kids.
All right, very good, so Paul will do one more comment, and then we're going to move on.
Just agree. Again, the heat isn't on you, you didn't have to say that. I'm a piece of this too. Communication, there was a lapse, and, you know, we could have done it better, so I'm not, you know, let you take all the heat.
It's okay.
No, yeah, we don't want to point fingers, we want to point things in the right direction.
Just a quick clarification, since we're going to prepare for setting a date for another public hearing, is it to Commissioner Mojo's questions, to make sure I don't do something incorrect here, I always work with Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Kravenoff because they're on our committee, can we meet with the other three commissioners individually to have conversation so that we can share with you and answer some of these questions that you might have, I imagine each of you have individual questions as well, because there's a lot of different things that go into this ordinance, different things that can be done, and if, if ultimately flavored tobacco is not the, the will of the commission, there are other things that can be done as well that we could present to you.
Okay, and that, and again, I, I, I'm not a real fan of, of staff, maybe who were working on promoting one thing to have, being, having individual conversations with board members, out, you know, and again, I, you know, I, to me, it might be a way to gauge if you have the support or not to do something, you know, and, and, you know, I, these, these things to me should just be done through, through what you do in your normal committee things, as was mentioned way early on, where you put it through these committees, and then the committees can have a recommendation that comes before this board. But we typically, like in my highway tracking committee and solid ways, we, I, we don't have our staff going on any issue that's coming before the board, we don't have individuals going in, and for a lack of a better term, lobbying for a particular ordinance, or just, I, I, and I'm speaking for myself, I don't, I don't, I don't really think that's appropriate.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Providing some sort of perspective and educational component certainly can go through our administrator and come to us, but I said earlier, I think that sometimes the best legislation comes out of hearing from as many voices as possible, and this could potentially be something that makes more sense coming to a work session. This is what the board, this is why we started those, is to make sure in a environment that we're not making decisions on, we, the entire board has the opportunity to provide insight to the crafting of a project, so.
And maybe that can still even be done before we even determine on, on what another public hearing would be, and that's another reason why June 1, so maybe we could have a, a work session on this to have the, you know, have some more dialogue.
Mr. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, how our, how our system is set up right now is the, the board chair has the authority to have a work session, if it would seem from a, from a stepping standpoint, if we're going to have a, rather than set a public hearing, if the wishes of this board is to have a, have a work session, it would seem that we would, it would be beneficial to set that first.
Yeah, and, and again, I, you know, and we can, we can talk afterwards, right, right now, right now, the, the idea of spend to, what, what would go on to a future agenda to create this, but maybe, maybe a first step can be a, a work session. I, with this, again, it goes back to this June 1 date that I talked about, if we have that, if we move that back a little bit, it allows for the proper time to dialogue, what do we really want to accomplish here? We have a different board now than, than was in place on December 17th, and, yeah, it's, thank you for coming today, it's, we'll, we'll see, we'll see what develops. All right, we'll go back to committee reports, I think the only one, you were all done, right? Okay. My committee reports are as follows, on January 7th, we had a diversion authority planning meeting, and we, we had some more information that's going to be coming out on the classification and compensation study that's now complete for diversion employees. Originally, we had, that that presentation was going to come to the planning commission in February with the idea in mind, then, then it would go to the full board for consideration. As it stands now, that, that information. Uh, as it stands now, that, uh, that information might be available sooner, and it might go directly before the diversion board of authority. On, I think, is it 23rd of January? It's that, whatever that Thursday is, I...
That's a Thursday.
Yeah, so that, that compensation, uh, might, might be, I don't, I can't say it, it might be on the agenda for that date for discussion. Uh, we did talk about, we talked a little bit more about the 2025 governance plan. We had a co-executor director update. I believe our new, um, our new manager of the, uh, diversion authority is gonna be back and, in place sometime in February, early February.
Yeah, February 2nd, I think.
Yeah. And it was, uh, very, uh, disappointing news that we got about, um, our lands committee lead, Jody, is leaving to go work for the state of North Dakota. She will really be missed. She's done an awful lot of really good things on behalf of, um, both the MCC, JPA, and the, uh, Cass County Joint Water Resource District, as well as really trying to negotiate in good faith with all of the landowners that have been involved, so I wish her well in her future role. On Wednesday, the 8th, we had a, um, dispatch, uh, budget and finance committee meeting. And basically went over, um, the 2024 budget, and it's, I think it's kind of in line with what we anticipated. There still is a few outstanding, uh, bills that need to be paid and revenues coming in, so, but it's nothing earth-shattering there, and, and then, um, we did approve the continuing our second Wednesday of every month for that board meeting, or that meeting to, for the budget committee. Thursday, the 9th, I attended the Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting in Fergus Falls. And it was nice to see, uh, newly elected board member Scott Steffes was, uh, on behalf of Moorhead Schools is now gonna be on that board. I think he'll add a lot of good insight on, on school district issues. As, um, there is some work being done on establishing a new location for a school in Moorhead. That Prairie Lakes, like, similar to ones that Prairie Lakes has, or Lakes Country, excuse me, has in Fergus Falls and Alexandria, and these are for, uh, I believe there's, I think there's like eight or 10 kids right now that are bused daily from Moorhead to Fergus Falls to, for that school, because there's, and that used to be, I think it was, well, it was more than the S program, but, um, these are for kids with real significant needs outside of the normal, uh, school curriculum. And so, um, so we're looking at a, they're looking at a potential site here in Moorhead, uh, and I think right now they're, I asked the question, what, what's the long-term goal in terms of a s- uh, square foot of capacity on something like this, and so, uh, one of the, uh, there is a short-term goal of maybe 12 to 15 students, but ultimately they'd like to have the capacity maybe as, for as many as 30-some kids from Moorhead have the ability. This is something that it's my understanding that Brandon Lunick supports as well, and, and, so we, we ended up, we did put Scott Steffes on the, on the building committee, so he'll, I think he'll do a good job on that and trying to help find a solution for our Moorhead kids so they're not traveling so far, uh, to, to have that education. On January 9th, we had the diversion board of authority meeting. Commissioner Eberinger reported on that, and I don't really have anything to add. That all the committees were established. On the 8th, excuse me, going back to the 8th, uh, we did have a, um, as, um, Commissioner Bear had reported, him and I, along with Steve, met with Greg and Mark from, um, West Central Initiative, excuse me, and we're, uh, obviously, we're, we're looking for, as I had mentioned in a previous meeting, that our $300,000 planning budget, planning for, um, legal and engineering is just about up, and so we're looking for additional planning dollars, and so we met with West Central Initiative and, and we kindly asked of them for like $300,000 in planning money. They were, you know, they were very, I mean, they're, they're really encouraged about what we're doing. They think this is a tremendous idea, uh, that's out there for, uh, and the, and understanding the need. Greg Wagner was, you know, very, very good, and Mark was, um, he was, he was really, they were really looking in an awful lot of different directions. We're trying to, so it's good to have them. They're gonna be working hard on, on our behalf to try to find additional planning dollars, um, for this, for this project. Yes? Uh, Mark, um, oh gosh, you had to ask. Yes, with, yeah, with, with Central Initiative. Yeah, and my, my, it's, yeah, yeah, I've got his last name here too, and I, I can't even, okay. So, and then, so then, uh, after that, then we, we did go, one of the, one of the things that, um, one of the things that we were trying to do as a board for, um, West Central Regional Water is to reach out to all of our s- small cities within Clay, well, not, within all three, uh, counties. And so part of the process is, uh, you know, we started the process, and a meeting was set up by Stephen Slick and Lucas Spath, our board chair, to meet with Holly, and, and so, um, that, that afternoon, Commissioner Bear and I had attended along with, and we were kind of there to hear what the presentation was gonna be between Lucas and Stephen. They did a really nice job, and, and going a little bit further into what, then what Ezra reported, you know, we're, we're trying to determine what small, what are the interests of the small cities when it comes to rural water? Whether are they, are they looking, or would they be looking at the potential of being a supplier of water? You know, so your communities like Holly might be able to do that, where your, where your communities such as Yulin and Felton would not be able to do that. And so, so we met with Holly, and there, there was, I mean, there, there was very, a lot of positive feedback from them in terms of this process, and they, I think they're, they certainly understand, uh, the issue that's, that's there with the poor water quality that's in a lot of the rural areas, and, you know, I, I, they kind of expressed in that early stages that they'd be interested in being a supplier of water, uh, for, you know, and so then it's, they'd have to determine what geographical outlined area they could handle in terms of capacities and those types of things, so. It was a really good meeting. It was a good start, and I think if we, if we meet with all these other cities and we have that same, uh, sort of, I, I think that's gonna really, really push this thing forward. And as Greg and Mark both said from, uh, West Central Initiative, these, this, oh, it makes a lot of sense, even for some of these small communities who are gonna, it's gonna be very difficult for them to deal in the future with their own water systems, uh, on their own, so. It was a really good meeting, and that concludes my report. Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 8th, I participated in county management. Uh, we welcomed Anna, Anna to our management team, so it's great to have her on board. Uh, we talked about the intergovernmental retreat, uh, legislative priorities, our, uh, upcoming Clay County Management Retreat, and, and received update from Darren and Anna on some HR issues. Uh, on the 8th, I also had a department head evaluation and participated, uh, in the West Central Initiative meeting that's been well-covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Bear. Also participated in the flood mitigation, uh, meeting, uh, with the chamber in city Moorhead, which has been covered by Commissioner Mojo. Last week, I've spent considerable amount of time either on the pre-design, uh, owner's report for our PRTF. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, uh, that we, we want to have that completed as part of our packet as we move forward for funding. Um, on the 9th, uh, and 10th was, uh, with Commissioner Krabunov, participated in the MIAC quarterly meeting again on the 9th, had the opportunity to meet several tribal chairs and presidents, uh, and talk about, uh, talk about what's, uh, our, our program and how we feel that it could be impacting on all of our residents. Uh, and then on the, and then the 10th, participated in the presentation with Stephen Summers, uh, and Commissioner Krabunov. Uh, as was mentioned, I think that overall it was well, well-received. We appreciate Representative Keeler for, uh, for providing us the, the opportunity and the platform to, uh, to discuss that and making introductions to several of the people uh, that we met. I think, um, as was, as was said, it was great to see the engagement of that, of the committee, uh, and, uh, the great questions that they had, and so, uh, we'll continue to work with them in any way that we can, as was mentioned, if they want us to come and present to their individual tribal nations, uh, we'd said we'd be happy to do that. Uh, on the 13th, uh, again, worked on, uh, the, the, uh, PRTF documentation, and also, uh, working on, uh, the MMB documentation, uh, for the PRTF. If, uh, one of the requirements for federal or state funding is if we're not part of the tour, we have to complete the more, uh, the MMB documentation, uh, so I was able to submit that yesterday, uh, for consideration. Yesterday, I also met with Joe, uh, for a considerable amount of time and looking at their strategic planning, uh, for, uh, for the courthouse. Uh, there, Joe's, I think, has talked that he's been working closely with, uh, Department of Corrections, uh, court, court administration, uh, even attorneys, uh, public defenders about trying to make this a true justice center, uh, and I think that, uh, I think, I know that from a building committee standpoint, that's gonna be something that we're going to uh, take, um, take another look at here in, uh, in, in January, uh, or early February. Um, one of the things, just wanted to touch base on, Commissioner Mojo stated earlier that the legislative session starts, uh, and so hopefully we'll, uh, have a productive session. Um, one of the other points that, along, along that, uh, that way, uh, Moorhead Day at the Capitol, uh, with the, with the, um, and the chamber has been, been, as a final date now of March 4th and 5th, on the evening, uh, the evening of the 4th, uh, there's an opportunity to get together, uh, with legislators, and then, and, and the 5th uh, be at the Capitol, and so I think given the, the stance that we have, I know that we've gone, uh, to the Moorhead at the Capitol different times. I think would be beneficial, uh, for, for, uh, for us to have our two, two representatives. I did talk to, uh, Commissioner Campbell. He's going to be unavailable at that, that date, and so we would be looking to, along with Commissioner Mojo, I'll be looking to have another commissioner participate.
Yeah, I, we did talk, I did talk with Steve about that yesterday, and I, you know, I think when we're, if we're there and it's legislative issues, and I, this board has kind of, uh, leaned on Commissioner Mojo and Krabunov to handle that, and so uh, I believe the appropriate person to go in my, in my place would be Paul.
That's correct, yes. Okay. And then, and, uh, Mr. Chair, would that be with per diem and mileage? Or would that just fall underneath his, his legislative piece?
Yeah. Well, what, nor, he would just be taking my place, so whatever I got, he would.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, just a, a reminder, we have our EDA/EDC meeting, uh, today at 1:00 PM, and then just, uh, just here while we were talking, I received an email training opportunity from Bowser. Um, they're going to be having, having a, a water district, um, refresher, they call it, for any current, uh, or new commissioners, uh, to attend. They're offering it two separate times. Obviously, we couldn't have everybody go, but if there's any interest, uh, please let me know, and I will, uh, I'll forward the information out to you if anybody's interested.
It's a refresher. That means you get to jump in Lake 15 next week.
Ezra, are you, are you, are you signed up for that?
Will do, alright.
You always do a nice job.
I, I think if it's information, I don't, Paul, I think you're well, well-tuned on that.
Uh, then that concludes my report.
Thank you. Jackie? Didn't I, did you come, have a request or something earlier regarding commissioner information on a website or something?
Yes, yep, yep, we've updated the commissioner page. Um, so yeah, there was a, just a question, um, with regards to adding some additional information if you'd like about each of you, so we have each of your pages now, um, up there in the districts map, the, yeah, each map, and then a list of your districts, and then, um, um, your committee assignments as well, so.
Alright, I'm sure Commissioner Eberger is gonna put on there that you're a hog fan?
This year.
Not as big a fan as our new commissioner here, Commissioner Bear. He loves hogs.
I was referring to the sports team. Alright.
My little boy is not a Vikings fan anymore. He just was, um...
Either is this big boy.
He was just...
It's too soon, gang.
Introduced to the heartbreak that is being a Vikings fan.
It's just too soon. Let's not talk about it.
I still wear purple today and, you know, anyway. Yeah, alright, any, so Darren, you got anything else for us?
Just a reminder, we're having the buffer program, uh, meeting after this one. It's, uh,
It's a committee.
Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Bear.
Alright, very good. With that, we are adjourned.